First we'll tackle the question that I just put up and I'll show you how to do it. Is that cool? Okay, so...
So are these all the same questions or is it a different one?
Yeah, or general, same general question, different numbers. Okay, so what is the energy of a photon with a wavelength?
That was even on the math scale a little bad.
Uh, yeah, not good. 375 nanometers, okay? So first of all, id, this says its wavelength, so make sure you know that the symbol for wavelength is lambda, okay? You were given two equations. C equals lambda nu. So this one is wavelength and this guy is the frequency. It's our textbook that uses the curvy v, nu. Then I gave you another equation. E equals h nu, okay? And what you need to know is, I'm gonna put, this is, you already saw the sheet. These equations are there. So h is 6.626 times 10 to the negative 34 joules seconds, okay? And the c is the speed of light. 3.0 times 10 to the 8. And again, that sheet has all that. Okay? So you look at this, you go, oh, I have wavelengths. Oh, energy, energy needs frequency, so I need to go from here to here. So do your algebra, you lay out your math. Divide lambda out on both sides. This guy's gonna cancel. Don't put numbers in right away because then it just seems to screw up people. So lambda nu. Okay, now you can plug in. You know that this is 3.0 times 10 to the 8 meters per second. And then you go, oh, wavelength, wait a minute, that's in meters and this is in nanometers. So you're gonna need to convert that. See, this, that's lambda, but that's a nanometer, so there is some thinking, a little bit, but look at your math and do it slowly, you don't have to do it super fast, just you go, oh, lambda 375, oops, nanometers. Parenthesis, fraction bar, nanometers on the bottom. I will give you this on a test. The 10 to the negative 9 meters, so that you know it, okay? I will give you that. So I would just, 75 reciprocal, just times 10 to the 9. I won't even, don't even move the decimal. Just leave it like this because now you can bring it right here. Okay, and you guys can pull out your cameras and take pictures if you need, alright? So 375 times 10 to the 9 meters. What, ma'am? Wait, oops. This says negative, why did I put negative 9? Sorry, that's pi 9 and this is negative and this is negative. Sorry, I saw that after. What am I thinking? Yeah, I don't know either. Yeah. I'm glad I fixed that, okay? Calculator, use the EE key. So 3e8, no times, no divide, no multiply, just e. Divide key. 375, e again, negative 9. Okay, and then hit equals and that will give you that answer. So try it, try it right now with your calculator while I plug this in. 3e8, divide, 375. e negative 9. Okay. Do you have an answer? What did you get? Yep. So 8 times 10 to the 14, the meters cancel, so this is 1 over seconds. That seconds drops down below and then to the denominator. I'm gonna erase this. Now you can find the energy, because we have the frequency. So e equals h nu. Okay? H is 6.626 times 10 to the negative 34 joules seconds. You take that answer from up above. Okay, because we now know nu, take that answer and put it into nu. 1 over seconds, and the seconds cancel out. Okay, and now you're in terms of energy. And when you plug this in the calculator. negative 34, no times, again, no divide. Here you do times because you're multiplying this scientific notation. e 14 and then enter. You guys got that answer yet?
Yeah, it was the 2 times 14.
I didn't get 2. This times this, I didn't get 2. I'll double check to make sure I punch, I punched it in right? Yeah, there we go. What is it? I got, I got the 3. Okay, that's what I got, sorry. I have to push down, I didn't realize that. Okay? Do you guys wanna do electron configuration?
On virgin A is number 4, but it's the, what is the approximate frequency of a photon having the energy?
Was the approximate frequency fro-
Try another one or-
This one?
Yeah, but using the energy.
Come in. So that, that's just using the energy equation. Or take a picture of it. Olivia, if you need to, you can twist that desk to move closer or whatever you like. And this is recording, so it's okay, you can talk. Okay, you wanna take a picture of this? Got it? Alright. You want the same- Well, you wanna do the energy of a photon? As she mentioned? Okay. I'll put two questions up. Here you go. Okay, I'll make it different than that one. Okay? And then Okay? So what is the energy of a photon? With a frequency of 5.47 times to the negative 27 hertz? So I took the same frequency, what is the wavelength of that photon? So here you're not using two equations within each other, they're just two separate equations. And I would do that on a test, I would do something straightforward like this.
Wait, don't you have to use those two equations to the x and the y?
Nope, just only one, which one do you think you need to use? You need to use the energy one, so you, you said you wanted to try it yourself, so do the energy one. Use the energy equation. So Olivia, do you know the energy equation?
Um, energy equals h times the frequency.
Yep, that's it, you got it? See, she, she gave it to you guys. So e equals h frequency. So now it's just a matter of plugging in the numbers. What is h? Okay, go for it. I'm gonna try and get this answer right now myself on the calculator, because earlier the calculator was acting up. Okay, I got an answer. Did you guys get an answer? Joe, what's going on? Joules seconds. Okay, 6.626 times 10 to the negative 34 joules seconds. So what are you gonna multiply it by? Oops. Oops, negative 27. Hertz, can I put HC and be okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a recording, but go ahead. No, it's alright.
This was found outside on the-
Yeah, so and I think it's yours, I have no more books.
This is 23F7.
Oh, you know what? If we flip it to the inside cover, there might be a barcode. The other side. Yep, that's the students, they left it out.
They left it upstairs on the hallway out in the hall.
Okay? You could change it to 1 over seconds or you can leave it, okay? Yeah, listen, you could leave it or you could change it to 1 over seconds, I'm good with that. Because 1 over seconds, it cancels the seconds, so, yeah. Oh, so the units are gonna, the seconds are gonna cancel and we end up in joules. Just J, yep. And so this answer come on in. Is 3.6 I'm gonna just put 624 times 10 to the negative 60 joules. Come in, and we got a recording too, so come on in. Okay. Okay, tackle this one. It's the c, yeah, you gotta do the c equals. And we'll do some, we'll do some electron configuration after this. And which color has more energy? Oh. Purples, blues, good. Alright. Frequency is right here. So it wants the wavelength, so what equation are you gonna write down? C equals lambda nu for frequency. I should probably made that a curvier v. Okay, now how you, so what are you trying to get by itself? Lambda, so what are you gonna do? I don't know if I'm gonna be able to edit that one, we'll see. I'll give it a try. Okay, I want nu, nu. I may, I may, I may chop that out, I'll figure it out. Okay. Okay. That's the whole thing about filming. When I've been making these YouTube videos, yeah, I'll stop, redo the same sequence. It's been different, it's been a different challenge.
At the end you have to say like and subscribe.
I don't do that.
You should vlog at school, like where your students in the background.
I have no time. Did anybody else get what he got? What?
I didn't do it.
You need to do it and use the EE key. I got, so far I will tell you I got 5.48. I won't tell you there's more, it's not done. 5.48, what do you, what's missing? Mm-hmm. 10 to the 34, what units?
Meters.
Yeah, seconds are gone, we're in meters. So you guys are good with this so far, right? Let's do electron configuration. You're gonna need your periodic table, so pull that out, okay? Um, that would be like number 6, for example, trying to figure out cation. Yes, I'll erase it. There's no winning, I'm a teacher, that's how that works. Okay, I, I need you to erase it because I'm gonna bring the periodic table. I can start with the top. No, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on that sheet, I won't mess you up. If you guys, one of the reasons to teach this is to get you guys to practice your algebra skills. Those algebra skills are gold. Hey, Luis. Come on in, and this is recording, so alright. Orbital notation.
That's the arrow there, right?
Arrows, that's it, so, yeah. Yeah, all the different forms. Why would I teach you 3 and not use any of them?
Because teachers do that.
Okay. I'm not going to. Orbital? Guys, guys, no. No orbital notation. Arrows. Okay? Now the arrow thing can be a pain, right? Because, so I'm not gonna use, I'm not gonna have you do arrows way down here on the periodic table. Yeah, that'd just be plain mean. But what block is this? What is it to start with? 1s, what belongs here? Good, hg. Okay? This block is 2p, where, wait, 2p, where is that, is that here or up here? Okay, so it's this first row, so this whole block is 2p, but it starts right here, so this whole row is a 2p block, row, 3p row. Okay, we're good? How about right here? Okay, so 3d. And then right here? You guys are all yeah, you're becoming quantum mechanic folks. Hey, is the periodic table supposed to be actually this size? No, why? Yeah, the Fs belong in here and it should be cut right here. It should be cut right here and this should be in there and stretches out, right? Okay, so we're good. Okay, well then, since you guys are really cool. Orbital method for ti. Ti, I don't know what element ti is, what's ti? Titanium, yep, titanium. Well, watch your periodic table, what number is it? You're not gonna put a piece of paper out? What? 22. Okay, so what are you gonna write down first? Yeah, wait. You got 1s, I like that, so you're gonna do 1s and then how many dashes? Yeah, how do you know it's one dash? Alright? Listen, there are two seats, 1, 2, okay, each square is a seat, 2. Pauling's exclusion principle, right? Says only 2 electrons per orbital, so 2 divided by 2, yeah, 1. 1 dash, yes, 1 arrow up, 1 arrow down. Well, wait a minute, so then how many electrons does titanium have? You said 22, is it 22 electrons or 48 electrons? So what? Why do you say 22?
Because the 48 is the protons and neutron atoms.
Yes, that's what it is. That's atomic mass, protons and neutrons. So we're saying this atom's neutral, so it's the 22, so there are 22 electrons to this thing. So we've already used up 2 of them, so what's gonna go next? Are you sure 2p? We just did 1s, so we start back here. We gotta go in order, so what? 2s. Arrow up, arrow down, now we've used 4 electrons. Now we can go to the 2p, this row. So 2p, 2px, 2py, 2pz. Right.
Cause you have to have 2p six in a row, so you divide 6 divided by 2, so you get 3 dashes.
So you got, you have 6 squares. No, it's because Pauling's exclusion principle says you can only have yeah, so you have the x direction, and so in one way you can have 1 electron on this side and 1 electron, it makes 2 a dumbbell shape, right? And so you need to know the shapes, Ps are dumbbell. P are dumbbell shaped. Okay? D orbitals, you don't need to know the shapes. Okay, so you got px, py, and pz going right at you. Okay, 3 shapes. I mean 3 dumbbells and then go on and on. Oh, so you count the squares in the row, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And since there's 2 electrons, it's pro orbital, right? So 6 divided by 2 is what? 3, so we have 3 orientations. 3 dashes in the x and the y and the z. And so we still have a lot of electrons left over, so 1 arrow up, 1 arrow up, 1 arrow up, we start with up and then we start filling with the others. Okay, that's Huns rule. Okay? And we're still not done, so we go where? 3s, I'm gonna start it down here. So 3s. 1 up, 1 down. So we're from 3s. 3p. Again, 3 dashes. Up, up, up. And now we do down, down, down. Okay? So we gone there, so we're here, what is that? 4s. 1 dash. S is our spherical orbital, 1 up, 1 down. And now we're in what? Yes, 5 dashes, because there are 10 squares. And how are you gonna put your electrons?
2 up.
2 up, good. Can I do this? Yep, yeah. I, I just can't do what? Can't pair them up and I can't pair 1 up and down yet, I have, I'll have to put electron in one of the orbitals. Yes, ma'am? Yeah. If I start down, then they could be downs.
Then you start up, they have to be up.
They have to be up. Okay?
We didn't fill in all the dashes because we already used 22.
What? Oh! Listen up. We didn't finish, we didn't fill all the dashes, right? So guess what? That's okay, we just leave them. Yeah, if you, if you're gonna fill up or you have more, let's say like 9 electrons. Up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down, and then 1 up. Yeah, yes. Yeah, you should put the line, there should be spaces to indicate there are other orientations in the orbital. No, oh, they can go right here.
Yeah, I know they can't.
You go here, but they can't go on the same line. They can't go on the same dash. Is that okay? Yeah, we're gonna, arrow? You guys wanna do another arrow?
1 more, short one.
Short arrow? Do phosphorus? Why do I wanna do phosphorus? Okay, phosphorus. Okay, we're gonna do phosphorus. Nope, you know why I decided sulfur? I wonder why? Sulfur. Do that real quick and I'll put the answer up on the board and you guys can match it up. And we'll see. Practice? Did you have practice? And you didn't bring any of your gear? No. That's your soccer gear, I'm talking about chemistry gear. What the Jake? Yes, no, we're not good? Okay, so I'm gonna do it. 1S, up, 1S down. 2S, 1 up, 1 down. 2P. 3S, 1 up, 3 down. 1, 2, 3. So up, 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 and down. Could I put that down on any dash? You got the answer, right? Exciting. I'm excited, I'm happy. Okay? Guess what? Unabrevi-, oh wait, should we do noble gas or unabbreviated? Okay. Short one for both? Okay, short one for both, okay. So, here we go. Okay, notation. So let's do it for... Since it's exciting. Oh, you wanna do both? Longhand and unabbreviated, you write it all out. Yeah. And then we'll look at the abbreviated, actually, we can write longhand and then we'll look at the abbreviated.
Abbreviated or dashed?
Abbreviated, no, no dashes. This is all superscript. Yeah, superscript. So there are no dashes. You want me to, you guys are gonna write it out and then I'll put the answer up?
Sure.
Okay. You wanna do the, okay, you can, down here? Yeah, you could, down here you can do noble gas. Just below it, you can do noble gas. I don't know if this green shows up well on the camera. I'll explain it in a second.
On the test, are we gonna work like an element thing with the blocks?
No, you gotta memorize the blocks, that's why I reviewed this to make sure. And everybody here seemed pretty solid.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, now the noble gas configuration. The noble gas configuration, what you're gonna do here is you know selenium is right here in this row? You go to the noble gas up here and you write the block. Okay? Yeah, so, yeah, cause all the noble gases, if you look at this, argon, it's gonna be 3P6, see right up here? Their energy level is completely full, all of them. Every square has an electron. So for all the noble gases. If you were to fill out the squares, there are no empty. So if we were to do the dashes. Every dash has an arrow, pair it up. Does that make sense? Every dash will have a arrow paired up. So, the sweet deal to this, since we know that for every element in this row. They're gonna have the same electron configuration at the beginning. We can terminate this. And so for selenium. Bracket, you must use a bracket. And it's gonna be argon, bracket. And we write this tail end here. 4S2, 3D10, 4P4, okay? Yeah.
So if you asked us to do the noble gas notation for something in the F area?
Yeah.
Just plug it into where it would go into.
Yeah, so like, so let's say you need a PR here, okay? So I'll just put it right above it here, PR. So we're gonna do noble gas for PR. So, the noble gas above PR, so this is in this block right here, so that's in this row. Yeah, so, is it xenon? Well, let's follow our finger. Yep, xenon.
And then you just do?
Yeah, bracket, Xe. Well, let's take into account everything, so. First of all. Yeah, we have the, we're right here, so you have 6S2. Well, 1, 3, 4, 5. 5D1. 4F. Yeah, 4F, 1, 2. That's it. Okay, that's for this style periodic table. That's the one that we're using. So you guys feel confident on that? If you were to get this graph, what does that graph represent, the one that's on the TV set?
Wait, what?
That graph?
Yeah, how radius.
So. And if you saw the one that's zigzag shaped? Right? The zigzag shaped one? What does that represent? Ionization. One class had one version, the other class had the other version.
Wait.
Wait, so.
Okay, listen, listen. So on the TV, right above. I'll draw it here, can I erase this? Well, you did a little lab activity. Where you drew the graphs, remember? You didn't turn it in?
Oh yeah, I did that.
Yeah. So what happened is, the first energy level. Not the first, but the second energy level makes this J shape. And then all of a sudden, this next energy level makes a J shape that's a little higher. They kinda do this. They start, from along the TV, they start creeping up. That backwards J is atomic radius. Okay? And the Js represent the periods. Lower energy level, higher energy levels. We're okay? And then the zigzag type shape is the ionization energy. Ionization is less here, greater here. You have a greater ionization energy over here.
What's the greater energy? It just goes down and it goes?
It does a little J shape. So then that, I was just trying to get you guys to recognize the shapes that these things make. Okay?
So we just have to know the shape versus name?
And the name that associates with it, yeah.
So the J one, maybe A would be right?
Uh, not A, it would be C.
And then what would, so wait, so it's right, that's the A?
Explain, which one?
It's number 17 on that version, or it says, it's the other graph.
That's ionization energy.
No, 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 I know that one, we're talking about, we're setting a slightly larger chart, or like, that's why.
This one?
It says 17. That's 17, that, yeah. Yeah, or it says 11.
Oh, okay, so that's an old California. Exit, not exit, standard test question? So. Okay, listen up. The chart above shows a relationship between the first ionization energy. Okay? This is trying to remove an electron from an atom at the, okay, the first energy, the furthest energy level away. We are recording. Okay, here we go. The chart above shows a relationship between first ionization energy and the increase of atomic number. Okay? The letter on the chart for alkali family of elements. And so, the alkali are this first column. Okay? It's gonna be higher energies here, less over here. So, these guys start each period. Okay, remember, the periods are horizontal. What's vertical? Families. Okay? So, guess what? These start each period, so get on that chart, which I don't have up there, but. W is down here, that is each ionization energy starting up. There's a zig here. Zigging up, okay? So W is the answer. Okay, Vs have lower energy levels. And then you start plotting these guys and they start going up. X would be the highest. That would be because these elements on this end. Noble gases, according to this chart. Noble gases would be really difficult to remember, remove an electron. Because they are happy, they got complete energies that are full.
What do you, what do you talk about the electr negativity?
Yeah. What number?
It's number on that version is R5.
Number 5? Okay, so. Which of the following elements has the lowest electr negativity? So that's looking at, and I could have put 3 elements together and then you guys gotta rank them. Okay? So, which of the following elements has the lowest electr negativity? So let's look at aluminum. Aluminum is over here, okay? And then calcium is way over here. Which one between these 2 has a higher energy ionization? This one's higher. So this one's lower. So far, calcium looks like it's close, okay? Then we have nitrogen. Nitrogen's right here. Is nitrogen still higher? Yeah? So, it looks like calcium. Oh, there's chlorine, chlorine's way over here. Still a winner? Calcium's the answer. It's further to the left and it's down.
So like, the right side is increasing?
Mm-hmm.
And then the left side is decreasing?
Mm-hmm.
And the right side is like non-metals and left side is metals?
Yeah. Okay, yes, this is metals, non-metals. That's a zigzag. I'm gonna ask a quick question. Aluminum and chlorine, which one's bigger?
Oh, chlorine.
Be careful.
Aluminum's bigger, but chlorine has more.
More, yeah, more energy, right, ionization energy.
So what would you answer my question?
For which one? Calcium, for this ques, for the question is calcium.
The one that you just said.
Calcium. Okay, for this question, which one has a greater size? Aluminum has a greater size. Chlorine has the greater ionization energy. It's opposite, yeah. Okay. What happens at the same energy level? It has 13 protons, 17 protons, that 17 protons has a greater attractive force. So it tends to get, bring the electrons a little closer to itself. Okay, they come a little closer, just, it's just a simple explanation, but it kinda, you know what I mean? So for that same energy level, there's a greater attractive force than 13.
What's the difference between electr negativity and ionization energy?
Ionization energy is the amount of energy it takes to remove. An electron. You know, from the outer, you know, the outer shell. Electr negativity, how is it stated there for you?
I don't know, I was just looking at the question.
No, but how's it stated?
Oh, which element is more electr negative?
Oh, that's all it says? It doesn't give you like a definition that? To make you kinda like, eh?
We'll probably just somewhere in here, but just.
You don't even get it from my notes?
No, I just remember here.
Okay. Electr negativity, the ability to attract electrons in a chemical bond. So in other words, when you bring the, let's say a left side, right side element for ionic bond. Which one's gonna attract electrons more to itself?
The right side.
The right side, yeah.
So the more ionization energy it has, the more electr negative it is?
No.
No.
The opposite, my bad.
No, there's no opposite. Electr negativity is greater on this side, especially for fluorine. Greater ionization, okay, they increase. The size decreases here, increases, it's opposite. So if you remember the size, you can remember all the other trends.
Okay.
Wait, I thought it was more electr.
No, it's less electr negative.
Wait, can you repeat that one more?
Oh, that's the lowest.
Okay, stop, stop. Okay, here we go. Size, going left is bigger. Okay? So if it's bigger, everything else is opposite. So what is electr negativity? Is it greater or smaller to the left? Smaller. To the right, size is what? But what about everything else?
Bigger.
Bigger, yeah. So if you remember that, you can do those trends, yes ma'am? What ma'am?
What? 15.
16, I could not hear you. Okay, 16.
15, 17.
Okay, one more time, I'm. Okay, one more time, I'm not hearing. 15?
Yeah.
15, 15. Okay, we came across, I didn't hear it. Okay, 15. Which of the following ordered pairs? Okay, so that's gonna be up here. Which of the following ordered pairs of elements shows an increase in atomic number and a decrease in atomic mass? So what you do with this one? We know about, um, it's order of increase atomic number. So we know that the number is increasing as you go across and you go down, right? It also, um, it's also talking about mass. So here's the deal. The number's increasing, we normally think the mass increases also. Well, there's a funky little thing that occurs. So if you look at chromium, millennium, 24, 42, okay? Atomic number, number of protons, yeah, it's increasing going down. 52, 95, or 96. Increasing, going down the mass. Oh, makes sense, that one's not a problem. But when you get to cobalt and nickel, okay, on the TV sets, right here in the middle. So when you get to this one right here in the middle? That's, so they want you to read your periodic table. 27, 28, okay? Number of protons are increasing. 58.9. So cobalt is 58.9, okay? Atomic mass. While nickel and I is 58.7. What? It's smaller! And that's all they're doing, is trying to show you that the periodic table, it's not a big anomaly, but there's one anomaly. So normally, things are increasing, both are increasing as you're going, da-da-da-da-da, increasing. But there is one that does something a little funky, that its atomic, its atomic mass, its average mass is a little less.
Okay? Happen like more times than there on the?
No, I don't think so. It's just right there, it's a little thing that's sharing, yes?
Can we go to number 10?
There is one I wanted to share before you guys leave. Okay? So, before we leave. So number 10. How does the shielding phenomena affect the relative atomic size in the same period? It doesn't affect anything. Okay? So shielding has no effect to relative size within the period. So all shielding does is, here, you know, Joe, there are these guys right here, right? Electrons are attracted to you, but the electrons below you are just, they're in the way. But it doesn't change anything because that attractive force is still there. So the size is there, but you're just shielded. There are other things in your way, that's all. Very simple answer. Okay? Now, the one that I wanted to share, and how many people got it right? Is number 8, for example, for version B. What is the maximum number of orbitals for a P sublevel? No, for P, 3. How about for F?
F would be 7, right?
Yeah? Okay? Okay, and then, um... Then how about, if I gave you Avogadro's number and say, find the number of atoms in a molecule or a compound?
What?
What? Here, could you do this one? To finish, if we wanna finish this tutoring, here. Could you do this one? Especially for those who need to do the retake, right? So how about this? Let's say you have 8.00 grams of calcium carbonate. Okay? How many atoms of oxygen? Yeah, how many atoms of oxygen? Could you figure that out? Ooh. Don't write 100, what's the first thing you write down? 0, 0 grams, Ca, Co3, yep. Whatever units on top, bring it to the bottom. For those who are doing the retake on the other one.
The retake on the initial analysis?
Yep. Not empirical formula stuff, yeah. Okay? Calcium, 40. Carbon, 12. 3 times 16.
Wait, what's the side of that?
What? What am I doing?
What are you?
Yeah, grams full, getting the molar mass. Am I gonna want you to do the longhand? No. So 10, carry the one. 100 grams? Yeah, gone, gone, you need to know it. Mole, Ca, Co3, this is where people get really confused. Yeah. Can't use Avogadro's number, it says it wants a number of oxygen atoms. We are gonna use Avogadro's. Yeah, see, when you get stuck here, make it like a chemical equation, just write it out like this. Ca, Co3 arrow, 1 calcium plus 1 carbon plus 3 oxygens, okay? This is all in terms of mole. So 1 mole of calcium carbonate will give you 3... 3 moles of oxygen. Now, yes, parentheses, fraction bar. Yep, mole oxygen. And now you can go 6.02 times 10 to the 23rd. Atom, oxygen. Take a picture of it. Yeah, I'm making a video.